Yeah, I think it's true.
Oh yeah? I'll try it on my iPhone.
I got it on my phone.
It works on iPhone actually.
Yeah, mobile site. I have to turn this thing on.
Bob. Eight six oh nine six three with Thrust.
Sixty.
Thank you.
Um, still time on. We've got two minutes. I start early.
Where's the Allen's? She's on vacation. School break today. This school, please go take a school vacation. From the last...
A bit though.
Two years.
Oh, it was.
But there's change.
Entire process. Well, that's smoking. That's the reason I didn't take it this year. And as I do that, you're um, investing for um, typical.
That's right.
Typical. I saw it. I thought we do. It looks very similar.
We're gonna allow it. Yeah, I saw that.
But I honor that when they showed it real quick. As far as I could see, it was asking me to work in it. Just wanted to do it in water. Well, I'm gonna say what's... Probably thirty seconds.
How are you?
Good.
How are you, sir? This is it.
It's amazing how long it takes for four minutes.
I know.
Alright, seven o'clock. And I call the meeting to order at seven P M. And first, where business is.
Let's read this through the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I say in this public comment? Is there any public comment?
Don Stonberg, four twenty-three, Robin Spike. I just have a question on the agenda. Set them back. It's D, it's consider appropriate certified resolution. Budget extension for Brownfield Municipal Pilot Grant. Historic Power Municipal Project.
Um, Doug?
Elka, can you...
Elka, I can answer that, but that's the original... That's right. Sorry. That's the original um...
What's it in?
Five hundred thousand dollar grant for the hazardous mitigation and demolition. Um, I think we received that several years ago. Um, and we've reported it to the Board of Selectmen several times before that. Um, under one of the concrete slabs, there was um, detected more petroleum products. Um, so we have to remove that. So according to a new legislation that was passed in the fall. You're allowed to apply for another grants, grant through the Brownfields. Up to fifty percent of the original grant without writing a new application. So um, we're here to get the certified resolution for that.
Okay, because initially I thought that they had spent the five hundred thousand, everything was fine. The part of the reason I questioned this, it's a pilot grant. Is that payment in lieu of taxes?
No, no. That's a pilot like um, like trying a new grant. Yeah. But we have not finished that project yet. We've only expended, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand of the original. Um, because once we found that, the reason we had to pull up that concrete slab was because it's on the National Register. We have to preserve the skybridge. So they had to put in some steel structure. When they pulled up the concrete slab, that's when they detected the oil.
Any other, thank you, Elka. Any other public comment? Okay. Um, I don't want approval minutes. April fourth, two thousand sixteen, Board of Selectmen Minutes.
I'm gonna approve this a minute. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any approval? Okay. Statutions and Communications, any Statutions and Communications, Doug?
I don't have any.
Um, six, the Board of Standing Committee, General Government Committee. Um, date to be set, we're looking at, Doug, and I were looking at, um, next, the Selectmen Meeting, May second, I would say? At? Twenty-two. When are you at?
Sixty. Oh wait a minute, May second, yes, I will be there. That might be important.
Okay. I may have that working? Okay, so we'll do that at six o'clock. And we'll be reviewing the pedaling slash vendor ordinance. Um, also, the codification, we're gonna hopefully get a little work done on that, correct Doug?
Yes.
Okay, towards that. And as far as the personnel policies, um, Doug is going to try to get some employees to, like maybe a subcommittee to work on those. And then bring them to the committee once they've been reviewed by them. Alright. Uh, Special Committees Charter Revision.
We are meeting next Wednesday and I'm putting together a packet of information for them. It will include general information about how we deal about charter revision, the deadlines and the timetable in terms of reviewing it. Once you've impaneled a charter revision commission. And the other thing that we will be providing them with is information from final recommendations of the Charter Revision Study Committee. And, and we'll just basically be an organization meeting, you know, determine if there are set up officers. Uh, and a meeting scheduled for April four. And a lot of that will depend upon the steps toward requirements as how they go forward.
Do they have any questions about that? Facilities Group. Doug, you want to take them?
Um, yes.
Either Doug, either Doug, you have some stuff too.
Right, uh, the L L B is gonna be in Town Hall on Thursday. Thursday. And they'll have a, we'll have an overview session with all the department heads starting at nine thirty, I believe. And then we go into individual departments meeting, sitting down with them for space needs, um, adequacy and also for their um, adjacency to... Just determine like tax click the next to accessor, next to building primer, something, you know, things like that.
Doug, you have anything on that?
No, we haven't met since the last...
Oh. Um, the W P C A met last Thursday and they determined that they're not going to use the... They're gonna look at the staying onsite at the...
Correct? Right. It's the intent?
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be referred back to General Facilities Committee, okay? Special Districts? Is that Special Districts?
Yep, their meeting was last Monday. Uh, they set the um, budget that will be going to hearing also on Monday, May second, at the Middle School on a crime. They are, wanted to know if we were up to speed on some streetlight replacements that's going to be both in the district and apparently the rest of the town as well.
I know that they've approached a number of different companies that...
Right.
To replace the streetlights.
Yeah, I think they're still top, they're still waiting for final quotes and what have you, but they wanted to make sure we knew that this was gonna be needed townwide to basically save a lot of money with newer streetlights.
Well, I think you save it in the long run.
Exactly.
You have to come up with the initial cost to replace them, but in the long run, in terms of the energy savings from replacing them with more energy.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah. No, initially, there's gonna be an outlay, but um, and they're also redoing call boxes. So if you see people messing around with call boxes, don't be concerned. And that's about it.
They still use call boxes? Everybody has a... Everybody has a cell phone in their pocket?
As far as the budget hearing, do you know what time that's at? On May second?
Uh, I don't have a time, I'm guessing seven. Otherwise, I would never know it.
Same night as the Selectmen's meeting?
Yep, same as always.
Alright. Moving along, Staff Report. Economic Living Development. Elka's um, report is in here. Does anybody have any questions for Elka? No? Okay. And Building Official Z E O? I've never seen that.
It came later.
Came later?
Do we have it? I got this.
Do.
Did it come? Okay.
And the Town Planner? Does anybody have any questions for the Town Planner? Moving along, Town Administrator Report. Any questions for Doug?
I don't have any questions on the report, but I got some questions on, on information that Doug put out at the last Selectmen Board meeting. Two point eight million dollars. It's listed as a settlement, Scott, what was settled?
That's Wheelbrader. That's the Ash.
Oh, that's the Ash, yeah. That's the settlement we do at, at the end of every calendar year. Um, Wheelbrader comes back and they do a survey of the elevations at the landfill. And determine, and on a basis of the determination of what the elevations are. They pay us on a regular basis, two hundred and fifty thousand a month. And I think that was, it was halfway through the fiscal year, they went up to about two hundred and seventy. Uh, so what the elevation determines basically is what is the difference between what they pay us on a regular monthly basis and what actually was put into the landfill. And that's the amount that is the settlement above and beyond the, what they give us on a, on a monthly basis.
How long have they been doing that?
They do it every year. What we do is we, we don't, we don't validate it every year with our own survey. But we have our, our landfill engineer, basically Bob Griffin from Griffin Engineering, goes out and he reviews the survey and he reuses the work that they do to confirm, to confirm that what they did was, was appropriate and so... And then on occasion, they will, we'll go out and we'll authorize our own survey to be done, but this was not one of those years where we authorized it.
Where does that money go?
Uh, some of the money can be used for general government purposes. The remainder goes into the Ash landfill.
How much?
Uh, we're up to about three million dollars that, of the funds that come from Wheelbrader goes into the general fund and the remainder goes into the...
So you're, that's in addition to the two hundred and seventy K?
That's correct.
So what, you know, fifty, what is it?
Uh, I don't think it's fifty, probably about sixty percent of that goes in the Ash landfill account.
What's the balance of that account?
Uh, I think we're up to about eight million dollars now. I'm, I'm just doing it on the, off the top of my head because I think we had six million dollars based on last year's audit. And with that amount of money coming in, I think we're, you know, probably far on the green now.
All the borrowing that we were supposed to do on that account?
We're, uh, for the audit, we're, um, have allocated five hundred and sixty thousand out of that even, or out of the six to seven million.
So there's still, there are going to be some withdrawals out of that account coming?
At some point, right.
But we're paying ourselves back.
With interest.
One percent. One percent. Thank you.
Anything else for Doug? Karen, none?
Can I just, I just want to update them on a high school project. And this is as of March of two thousand sixteen. Uh, as you know, the high school is, um, the construction is done in basically seven phases. Uh, Phase one, which was temporary classrooms and offices, they're ninety-seven percent complete. Phase two, the math and science buildings, a portion of the classrooms and there are ninety-nine percent complete on that. Phase three, main academic wing is again ninety-nine percent complete. New gym is ninety-nine percent complete. Uh, they're working now on Phase five, which is the fitness locker rooms and theater, they're up to forty-five percent complete on that one. Phase six, which is cafeteria music room, they're approximately eleven percent on that one. And then Phase seven, which is the final fit out and Board of Education offices is two percent. So on that basis, it looks like they're probably, yeah. They're moving right along, so. And to date, um, they committed of the thirty-six million, we're up to about thirty, thirty million five hundred thousand projected. The projected construction cost will be approximately thirty million five hundred thousand, which is not that far off from what was projected.
Now, Doug, can I, being the time, do you want me to sneak that in under unfinished business for the budget?
Yes.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to add um, the budget discussion to the agenda under unfinished business number one.
Someone else?
I hear.
Fallows in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? More extensions? Alright, so unfinished business we are on. So Brenda?
Yes.
You are up.
Okay. So um, as everyone's probably aware of at this point, um, there was an error in the calculation of the mill that was issued at the last, since the last meeting. During the process of doing the budget for you guys, I was using two different spreadsheets. And it was my error in taking over the wrong calculation to the income section of General Government. So it was slightly overstating. Since then, I've gone back, I actually spent the entire day today trying to figure out where things went wrong. Um, including the weekend. Um, basically what I determined, at the end of the day, the true mill rate that needs to be set at the ninety-seven percent collection rate is seventeen point seven four. That's, that's the bottom line. Um, two things happened with this. One was my fault. The other is in Excel, there, there's a known rounding error in Excel. So what happened is, the quotient that Excel tells you to use, when you're, if you look at these um, the bonded indebtedness, the library, the capital, the Board of Ed. As you go down to each of those categories and then even down at the bottom, where I had amount to be raised by taxation, there's three different numbers that were there. Um, Excel tells you what quotient formula to use and unfortunately, when you use it, it rounds it up. So it was an error there as well, so there were two errors. One was mine and the other was this formula, which you can't use. Um, I don't want to belabor that because technically, if you look at the prior year, you guys used that same formula before I even came. So I, I unfortunately just assumed everything was working and moved that year over and started working off this next year. The bottom line on the numbers, if you look through the budget that everyone got initially, all the um, revenue reports for each section, those are accurate. There is no error on those. And where the error happened is when you get to the end where it says, uh, number here. The forty-one, forty, four forty-nine is what the total is on those, on the, of those individual reports. And I should have carried that forward and I didn't. Basically, that's, that's the story on that. If I had like a, what sticks is if I had like some type of projector set up here, I could show you what the formula looked like in there and how it did what it did. Um, but I tried it several times and I used the add machine and I used the spreadsheet and that's how I eventually, because even if I went in Excel and asked it, what other way can I calculate this, that's what it gave me. So if you add them up individually going down the line, it does come out to seventeen point seven four.
But you, you realize the very simple math to calculate the projected mill rate is you determine your collection rate, which we assume it's ninety-seven. You take your what a mill's worth, times about a ninety-seven percent. That's what an actual mill rate is. And then you take, divide, you take what you need to raise by taxation, divided by that number and that gives you your mill rate.
I know, and that's what should have happened last year to me, it didn't.
Well, I don't know what happened last year, but that's the real essential.
But I mean, that's the same, but I, like I said, I inherited some of this and assumed that it was gonna work correctly and I, that was my mistake. I already said that.
No, no, but I'm just saying, you don't, you don't need a rounding formula. You just take what a mill's worth versus what we need to raise and divide it to.
It's not a rounding formula.
No, you said there was an error in the rounding.
I said there was an error in there because Excel always rounds. And that's like a general, and so what it did is when the formula was put in there, it did what Excel does, which I didn't catch. And yes, I'm aware that it is a simple process to do. But I was also assuming that this chart that you folks used last year was correct, which it was not. So, lesson learned on my part and hopefully going forward, I mean, I've looked at it enough to where this won't happen again. And if we have the new software, what will happen is if an adjustment occurs, the budget module is all connected, so it's gonna eliminate that error. Because it will filter right through to the end result. It won't involve Excel.
What's the mill rate, what was the mill rate this year?
Sixteen forty-two.
So when, when we initially got this, and I, and I appreciate the explanation by the way, thank you. Um, it was about six hundred and thirty-two thousand more than the previous budget. Now it's, looks like about one point two, so this is another six hundred thousand dollar thing.
Seven ninety-nine.
Seventy-nine. Well, at one point two, what's, mill rate's six, six hundred and sixty thousand, right?
Six hundred and... Well, ninety-seven percent and mills worth six hundred.
Okay.
Almost six hundred.
So we're still talking?
Almost a mill.
Two mills?
Seventeen, well seventeen point seven four minus sixteen forty-two. One point three two.
Yeah. So you're adding basically another mill. Oh no, a third.
A third. A third.
Yeah.
That's, that's without using any surplus.
That's without using any surplus.
Or making any cuts.
Making any cuts. Or I have another...
But that's, that's still not working out. If a mill is, is six hundred thousand and is one point two, that's two, that's two mills.
Well, what, what I did is take her, her bottom line number, the amount needed to be raised by taxation. You take that, you divide it by this, by what a mill is worth at ninety-seven percent collection. And that's how you get the one point seven, uh, seventeen point seven four. And then you take seventeen point seven four minus sixteen point four two, and there's your differential.
Last year, the town applied three hundred thousand in surplus?
Yeah. We're not gonna need it. We're not gonna need it.
Excuse me?
We're not gonna need it this year.
It's in the issue to use.
We're not gonna have to use the surplus.
Okay. So, the obvious observation is that three hundred thousand is still there then.
Yes. And just for your information, well, do you want me to...
Go ahead.
Some other options for you to consider. Last year, as part of the, the budget, we did appropriate fifty thousand for equipment purchases. So that fifty thousand is available now. Um, the other thing is, is we can get closer to the true amount that we receive from Wheelbrader. Um, so right now, we're up to about three million dollars. I only budgeted two point six because I want to be conservative because, you know, uncertainties, but, you know, if we use this year's number, or I'm sorry, the audited number for last fiscal year, about two point nine. That's something you might want to consider to raise that maybe by three hundred thousand to two point nine. Because we know based on last year's, actually, based on the settlement, we're gonna have a lot of money available to the general fund, so.
I thought two point six million was the most we could, could take out.
No. Um, a couple, actually, a number of years ago, the town meeting went ahead and did three percent increase per year. And that gives you about three million dollars for a year.
Now back to this three hundred thousand, Doug, so you're saying that come June, uh, June thirtieth, you're talking that we're gonna have at least three hundred thousand left over?
Yes.
It's gonna go back to the, how much, what's our projection?
I don't know, but how, how close we are.
We had, we had a couple of meetings, Doug, you might have forgotten, where we had to borrow from that surplus for some of these things. That we had hired the full-time position.
Right. But even with that, I don't think it's gonna hit the, the amount we need to take from the surplus.
Yeah, no, I don't believe so either.
So rough idea right now, looking at June thirtieth, how much are we gonna end with?
Uh, the only thing I know about is probably about three hundred thousand.
That makes sense?
Somewhat.
Now, the three hundred thousand though, is on the income side of the budget.
Right.
Scott, are you asking what's going to be?
Well, I want to know what our net net is gonna be on June thirtieth. When I was on the Board of Ed, because as you know, Board of Ed members are personally liable if you finish in the red. So every month, Nancy had a projected June thirtieth number and that number better not have brackets around it or we're all in trouble. So what I'm saying is, take your three hundred thousand and take your expenses, what are we projected to finish at? June thirtieth. Now we got May and June, so we should be pretty close to zeroing in on it.
Yeah.
If we could get a projection before Thursday night, that would be helpful to the Board of Finance. And I'm sure it would be helpful to me.
And then there's fifty thousand dollars that we didn't spend in vehicles, so that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars surplus.
No, that goes, I'm sorry, that goes into a, the general non-rate. That's capital non-rate, correct? If you want to, you can go to the town meeting and say, okay, we have the fifty thousand set aside, you can, now we can appropriate that for, if you want to do the pickup. There's a, there's a...
Okay, I was just going to ask that.
Yeah.
If we have a need for a pickup, why wouldn't we not spend the fifty thousand to buy the pickup?
Exactly.
Right.
But the thing is, you appropriate the fifty thousand for equipment needs, you still haven't actually appropriated for a specific need. So what you would do is you would go to the town meeting, the annual budget meeting, say thirty-five thousand out of the, that account be spent on the pickup.
But didn't we already do that with that money?
No. It's a two-step process.
Any last questions? Brenda? No?
So that, that's the reason we decided we should have another public hearing on this, because, you know, we significantly increased the amount that we need from mill rate. But there are, there's outside of some members that do have other ideas. I just wanted you to know that there are other things out there that doesn't necessarily make that one point three two mill increase too bad. And then again, you're, you might be talking about some cuts too.
My concern though, applying some more of that Wheelbrader money, is we have a budget here, a proposed budget, that calls for about a mill and a third extra spending. Okay?
Right.
But we have Santa Claus over here that just dumped the big one for coal in our lap, okay? That's a temporary thing. So we're gonna fill this year's budget shortfall, or next year's budget shortfall, if you will, by dipping into that big bag of coal. But that bag of coal's not gonna be there forever. And from year to year, we might not know where it is. So, we're raising the spending bar and we're temporarily meeting it. I just, I, I'm not comfortable with that.
Well, that's why on Thursday night, we can also talk about some cuts.
Yeah.
But I, I think at the end of the day, I'd be happy with some cuts and maybe some use of surplus, but I, I hear you. The one thing to remember though, we just renegotiated the Wheelbrader contract, so in terms of looking at the horizon, that horizon's a lot further out there. When that, when that bag of coal is gonna get empty, it's a lot, a lot further down the road. So that's, in terms of a positive thing, it's a positive thing.
And the other thing that's coming along on that is I've, I've read the recent reports that Wheelbrader is, is in terms of submitting their application for the permanent siting of the recycling, the metal, metal recycling. And I think that was at two hundred and forty dollar, two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's gonna, not add to our grant list, but it's gonna be accelerated, appreciated, non-depreciating.
Non-depreciating. It's like a post-community benefit. They, they don't count it as a property, but they will be, under the agreement, they will be paying about two hundred and forty thousand a year.
Based on last year's mill rate, so.
But again, that's, EEP has not, the EEP has not permitted. So, they've been, they've been dragging their feet on permitting.
Yeah, what's, it's been two years so far?
Excuse me?
It's been two years so far?
It's been a year. Actually, actually, we approved the contract for January first.
Right.
No, I'm saying about permitting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been about a year.
One of the things we need to be mindful of going into Thursday is, you know, we talked about, we, we kind of throw out one point three two as, as a figure. And we've got, but one point three two is one point three two more than social security recipients got, it's more than any retired veteran got. It's more than retired service got. I don't wanna be on the board and drove up a mill rate one point three two when, when that group of people got the big squadoosh.
And next year?
So, we either come up with cuts, we do it night, I don't care, I got all damn night. Or we come up with a solution, 'cause one point three two?
No, I, I don't think I'll fly.
That, that's the wrong, that's the wrong idea.
Plus, we get that next year also with the school coming.
For a minute, finance, I gotta go to school.
Some other things going on with that mill rate next year also, so we have to be mindful of that. And as far as the venue to do that, unfortunately, is not here. Probably would have to be at the town meeting, the town here, so. All right, so, we've got about two minutes.
If we're having another public hearing on the budget with the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance will then meet after that public hearing, correct?
Next Monday.
And they will have an opportunity to adjust the budget before the town meeting.
Before the end of town meeting.
And then at the end of town meeting, you can make cuts, but you can't add.
Anything else? Right, I would entertain a motion to recess for town meeting.
Who?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thirty seconds.
You wanna say it, go ahead. Town of Putnam boasts a special town meeting April eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Electives and citizens qualified to vote at town meeting with Town of Putnam, Connecticut. I hereby notify and warn that the special meeting of said town be held at the Daniel S. Rivera Selectmen's Chamber, Putnam Town Hall, one twenty-six Church Street, Putnam, Connecticut, on Monday, the eighteenth day of April, two thousand and sixteen, at seven-thirty in the evening for the following purposes. One, to choose a moderator for said meeting. Two, to determine the wishes of those present eligible to vote at a town meeting of the Town of Putnam on the following proposal. Be resolved by the town meeting with Town of Putnam that a certain tract or parcel of land and the Putnam industrial park be sold to John Row or his assigns for a price of fifty-four thousand dollars upon such additional terms and conditions as may be recommended by the Town of Putnam Economic Development Commission. A copy of the description of the property proposed for conveyance is on file in the Selectmen's Office and available for public inspection during fall season's hours. Three, to determine the wishes of those present eligible to vote at town meeting with Town of Putnam upon the following proposed resolution. Resolved that the net proceeds received from the sale of industrial property to John Row or assigned up to a maximum of fifty-four thousand dollars is hereby appropriated to the Economic Development Trust Fund. Said funds shall be subject to further specific appropriation pursuant to the Economic Development Trust Fund ordinance. Data, Putnam, Connecticut, this fourth day of April, two thousand and sixteen. Town of Putnam, Anthonyton Falls, around on the air. Renee C. Lasko, Jay Scott Pembroke, Alma D. Morey, Owen H. Carr, Roy Simmons, Douglas Cutler, Jr., its Board of Selectmen, the testers, Jason A. Tomclerk.
Thank you, Sarah. First floor of business is to choose a moderator for the meeting. I entertain any motions for that?
Do you wanna be moderator? I nominate Alma Morey.
One second.
Aye.
I need a motion to close moderator, to close, all right. All in favor of Alma Morey?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, so first, the first thing to do to determine the wishes of those present. Number two, be resolved by the town meeting of the Town of Putnam, a certain tract, parcel of land be sold to John Row or, or his assigns for the price of fifty-four thousand. Is there any comments, questions on that, number two? Any discussion? All right.
Sorry.
Motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions. All right, moving right along. Number three, that the net proceeds received for the sale of industrial property to John Row or assigned up to a maximum of fifty-four thousand is hereby appropriated to the Economic Development Trust Fund. Any discussion? Higher motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All is carried. I just need a motion to.
Adjourn?
Adjourn.
That's town meeting.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, I need a motion to, uh, not recess, but the opposite.
Feel like okay.
Password.
All right, all those in favor of reconvening?
All right, I'll, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, moving right along. Regional Technology Park, I believe is where we're at.
As I said in my report, we should be finishing up all the minor details of the two major construction projects, which were the bridge and the east access road and the access road on the west side. The contract free, which was the sewer lift station's been complete. So, right now, it's just a matter of doing some cleanup work and we move into, I think you're opening bids tonight?
No, you're not opening bids.
Not yet.
But we will have bid, bid openings for the extension of the river trail to the Technology Park. I do two meetings.
Nobody wrote up to Deluxe?
I have the, some engineers working, completed on that. And the other thing is I wanted is to see what kind of gravel we get off that.
Offside of.
Any other questions for Doug on that? All right, moving right along. Army Development, Doug, already did report on that, that the facilities committee. Cardale Falls Dam. Doug, do you want, we don't have time to adjourn this session, but Doug, if you'd like to.
As you know, from last meeting, we had a separate meeting with the fisheries people from Department of Environmental and Energy and Environmental Protection. Also present at the meeting was Lee Parker from the Putnam Green Tower. And we had Greg Sharp, our special counsel, and Bill Sanhage there. One of the things that the EEP folks, first of all, I, one of the things I wanted to get out of the way quickly was the question about the eel ladders. And apparently, the eel ladders do not go the entire length of the falls. They just have, basically have one to two feet at the top of the falls. So, it's gonna be not as intrusive as we initially thought it was gonna be. It's just to help, help get them over that hump of the falls. The second thing is, of course, in regard to the flow over the falls. And based on what they're thinking is, is that you're actually gonna see during the, because there's a minimum required, that they're, they have to guarantee that that minimum, you know, come over the falls during certain period of time. So, it's their thinking that you're actually gonna see, you know, more water than you initially think you would see coming over the falls during those periods. Now, again, that's not based on anything except their, you know, their, you know, I'll see if I can use calculations.
Did our, did our engineer think the same way?
Yes. So, what basically came out of this was, is that, because Bill Sanhage has always recommended that we have a agreement with Putnam Green Tower. And so, we've asked them to provide us with an initial draft of what they would constitute in terms of protection for the town and also which would serve their needs. The timing of this is critical because they're expecting to have a startup of that hydroelectric by the end of, end of May. So, we wanted to ensure that we would get that in a timely fashion to review it and consider it and add our, our, get our input to that. The other thing that they're gonna, that will be included in is that, is that they're going to have, I don't know whether it's a staff gauge or a static gauge, which will be actually on the dam so that as you, you know, if you have the monitor or something, you'll be able to see what the water level is. And if it goes under that level, then, you know, there's gonna be vibration. The other thing is that they have, they're gonna have within the mechanism, the sense that it's all gonna be automated, they're going to have a thing that will read the water levels and they will have it on a graph. Now, whether it's, what would you call it, paper type graph? Or whether it's some other type of way of being able to indicate what the water levels are, they're going to have that also available. And that will be included in their plan to the town is that they will, on a monthly basis, provide those, those figures. So, we'll have these staff, the staff or the static gauge, and we'll also have this other gauge that will be measuring the water over the dam. So, and it will, probably will be based on the FERC license, so those flows that are required on the FERC license. The other thing is, of course, is the boom, and they will come up with a, a plan whereby they will not have the boom out in the river at all times. There are certain times of the year where they don't think it will be required. And they will also possibly put in the plan that during events that we have, they'll bring the boom in, those types of things. So, that will all be in the plan as, as was discussed at that, that meeting. And again, we're just waiting on a draft of that plan to come from. We, we asked that Putnam Green Tower provide that plan to us first so that we could have some input on it and then provide our feedbacks on it. Also with the understanding that this has to be done before they start up the, the, the plant.
Now, was I, I thought I was informed that the notch is a no-go, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
So, they have to?
They were filling the notch.
They have to fill in the notch.
Can I talk about the boom?
You can.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Can I talk about the boom?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, I took a ride as a driver to Valhalla, New York, last week. And I met with the Department of New York City of Armored Protection. The reason I met with them is Valhalla, New York is the reservoir for the drinking water for New York City. So, the water comes in from the Cats, Catskills, it comes in from Delaware River, and it meets in Valhalla with millions of gallons sitting there. Picture one in your packet basically depicts the trash boom that they're planning on using, which is the closest one on the picture to the shore. And it's not the same application because it's not in a river. There's no current, there's nothing moving. He wouldn't let me take a picture of the building where the water goes into for security reasons. I had to give him my license and get pre-processed before I went out there to make sure I wasn't a terrorist and I passed. But the. That's right, it was touch and go there for a while. But the, the interesting thing is the, the boom, this boom that they're talking about using, what he uses it for, or what they use it for, is not so much to keep trash away. That's what these big booms are out here. But it's to keep the sediment from the banks from coming into the, the water supply. So, kind of a different application. And I told Owen when I got here, this is actually about two hundred and fifty feet down from the road. Very easy going down, not so much coming up. So, it was, it was quite a hike. But these other pictures are, this one's closer to the water. And then the other pictures are from a different vantage point showing another trash boom from a different side. But the first picture with the closest boom is the same one that they're talking about using. My personal opinion, and I've said this from the beginning, is I don't think it's that pretty. It didn't look any prettier in person than I envisioned it. It is black, it's not yellow, it's not orange, so it kind of blends in a little. But, but even on a cloudy, dreary day, it's still kinda stuck out there to me, so. That's the, that's the story of my field trip.
Do you think they rested for this picture?
That's right, well, I got a little bit of the building in there. That's when he, that's when he told me, hey, hey, easy, no picture of the building. So, but that, it was, it was interesting, but not quite the same application as what we're, we're proposing. Non-moving kind of static work.
Any other questions?
Yeah, what's the latest estimated start date of actually doing something across the street from, from booms and dams and everything else?
You mean on the cargo?
Yep.
The mill side?
Yes, sir.
We have to finish up the hazardous mitigation. Once you approve, or should you approve the resolution this evening, then you just have to remobilize our portion of it. And that's just the hazardous mitigation that we have an upcoming for and demolition of the non-historic relevant buildings.
How long do the champs go, maybe?
That's, as far as I know, it's still there. And I actually met someone at a Connecticut Main Street Conference who approached me about Cardale Falls Mill. And he's one of the funders. And it's another federal agency.
Did they close on?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
Because the last time they were here, that was the question that I had, is when are they gonna start rehabbing mill? And they said they hadn't closed on their funding yet.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is dependent on the hydro, so I think once we get the hydro down.
Well, that's funny, because she sat here and told me that none of it's dependent on the other.
No, she said that the hy, no, she said the whole project hinges on the hydroelectric being.
I thought that's not what I heard, maybe I misheard.
That's what I heard too, yeah.
The question that was asked is, what happens if utopia doesn't happen across the street? Are you gonna pull everything out of that hydro? She sat here and told me you had to have one with the other, okay? So, I said, okay. And I asked this question and I asked it very specifically. I asked it for a reason. I said, Eden Falls, and this thing doesn't end up happening across the street. Well, since you, since you have to have that to have this, you're gonna take everything up and, and pack it home? And she gave me a look, she never answered a damn question.
Why don't I go back and get those answers? And if you have any.
And then I asked her the question, how much she was selling the, the leftover juice from and could, without it having to provide electricity where, be sold directly to Eversource? That she said no. Which made me wonder then why you're building that first?
No, she said she can sell it to Eversource, but the rate of payment from Eversource to her for purchase power is so low that the hydro plant, just as a hydro plant, would be a losing proposition.
Right, and that's when she said that the mill is needed.
Right.
So, to make the hydro worth it.
Right.
Correct. But I think the mill, the hydro has to be, and I could be wrong, but I thought I understood the hydro has to be, all this has to be finalized before they can move forward with the mill too.
Well, to Roy's point, I felt better because I was worried that are we just gonna talk about a hydro plant and not a mill rehab? And when she explained that she needed the mill rehab to make the, the numbers work, I felt better in terms of that, meaning that we'll see a rehab mill. But like you, I'm waiting to see something happen over there.
Well, you know what? Like, like I said, I, you know, like I said that, that night, I gotta believe him because I don't know any better. But if it was, if one was dependent on the other, and the longest pole in the tent of vote projects is getting, getting the buildings done, I ju, you know, you wanna, you wanna find out a company's, what a company cares about, look where it spends the damn money.
Well, that's why I am.
So, why are they, where are they spending the money? Just saying.
If I recall correctly, part of the scheduling on the hydro, on the hydro plant, and I could be misremembering here, but I seem to believe that some of the state money they're getting on the hydro plant had, do they have timelines attached? Yeah, they had timelines attached. So, the hydro has to be the priority to comply with the requirements the state had for some of the funding for the hydro plant.
But if you remember what I brought up to them is that when I was on the tour of the town with many others in this room, Tim Sheldon stated that, oh, you guys are gonna be working on this bridge. We'll probably start, it might even be quite a long the process or even finished by the time your bridge is finished. Well, the bridge is finished, we're driving over the bridge, and that mill's still sitting there.
But Doug, can you just reach back and get some clarification for us, please? All right.
And as I said, if there's anything concerns, like the Kelly's questions, I'm gonna make sure that those get addressed through this project, that through the, what they bring forward, and if you have any concerns you'd like to have addressed in that.
Quick question for Delver. Delver, you said "we" many times. We have to clean up, we, we're doing this. Who's "we"?
In my office. Oh, you mean as far as cleaning up the mill?
Oh, you mean as far as cleaning up the mill?
Yes.
Just the contractors and the engineers. That's pretty much it.
Okay.
And I have to oversee it from the administrative part.
Excuse me?
I have to oversee it through the administrative part.
Okay. So it's not the town, and the town is not on the hook for any of that?
No. No.
Okay, so moving right along. Dean, Plan of Conservation Development, that is going to be tabled for, Tim Ford was not able to attend tonight, so you will, hopefully he'll be able to attend the next meeting. Eleven, any grant considerations or updates? Nothing?
No.
All right, moving along to twelve, new business, we have some bid openings, so first is equipment rental. And we got two.
True Ax. Yeah, True Ax. That's true. Huh? Is the only one, too?
What would you like us to read?
I don't think you have to read every piece of equipment.
What, the equipment bids?
Yeah.
You usually have to read them all.
A million different pieces?
There's too many different pieces.
Yeah, the amount.
We have to read every one of them?
How many do you have?
I should have kept passing this down.
All right, Pine Prof Paving and Landscape LLC, backhoe ninety-five dollars an hour. We're really going to do this?
We want to just...
I sent it out to Jerry, let Jerry make the recommendations. Well, let's hear the bid, let's just see what we're going to...
He's got, he's got less than that.
But who is it?
SAS Instruction Incorporated.
Who's the other one, I'm just looking.
Pine Prof Paving and Landscape, always hard.
Does somebody want to make that motion?
So I move we refer both bids to our Town Highway.
Public Works.
Public Works.
Director.
Director, Jerry Boswell, then review and make a recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Two good stuff, please.
Moving right along, bid opening for Cargill.
True Ax is the lowest bid. The only bid.
This is from True Ax, Plainville, Plainville, Mass.
How many do you remember?
What's that?
How many do you remember, the price of last year?
Well, bid price per hour is one hundred and ten dollars. Approximate number of basins per hour is eight. That's actually a pretty high number.
That's, yeah, that's bad.
I think we questioned that last year, too.
We always question it.
Yeah.
We thought six was pretty good.
It's getting better.
Bid price per basin equals just under fourteen dollars at thirteen eighty-eight. That stops in the hole too.
Don't award his recommend. I move that we recommend review, public works director.
Make a recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, there were a couple guys.
It would be that.
They were like way over the, way over the top.
Item twelve C is the appointment of Angela Sanchez as town's Putnam Assessor, and Angela is in our audience, for those of you who do not know her, she's...
I move that we appoint Angela as the new town Putnam Assessor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then you have to say anything?
We know, we know the story.
The secret cell.
Everybody knows. Your reputations precede you, I guess.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
I want to get brownie points for saying...
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to say it after the fact.
All right, item, consider approving a cert, consider approving a certified resolution, budget extension for brownfields, municipal pilot grant, start Cargill Falls Mills project. Anybody have any questions on that for Delph?
Yeah, so I guess when Delph answered Don's question earlier, but wait, explain why we're doing this again? I thought we did it once before.
What you did before was approve it under the grants item on the...
Right.
At the last meeting. This is a certified resolution that our town council is recommending that we do, just because it's additional funding.
Okay.
And it's a change of contract.
Okay. And the amount is?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
And it's a pass-through grant?
It falls under the same grant, and that was a pass-through.
That was a pass-through.
Yes. Took fourteen months to write the pass-through agreement.
This is just an application? This isn't, if we approve it, we get the two fifty, correct?
No, we have it.
We do?
We have, yes. Yes, we received a letter from Tim Sullivan, who is the deputy commissioner of brownfields, said we have it, but our town council wants the Board of Selectmen to do a resolution, because it's a change of contract.
So what?
Motion, a second, any other comments? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, moving right along. Item E, consider approving a declaration equal as per housing month.
So what?
Motion, a second, any, any discussion?
Yeah, is this a requirement? Is this a state requirement? Really?
Federal, I think.
You get CDV grants, you're going to have to have fair housing.
Okay.
All right, you're welcome. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item F, approval of bills?
I make the motion to repay all approval of bills.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? D, all of the business to likely come before such meeting? Anything anybody wants to? First Friday's are coming up, it's very handy, I can think of it off the top of my head, first Fridays. What's the theme this year?
Delph, man, celebrating the six major cities in the United States. We're joining Seattle, Nashville, New York, Boston.
And Putnam.
Actually, I think one is Putnam, and I can't remember the other one.
Yes. Thanks, Delph. Yes, Delph?
I just want to let you know that at the request of the police department, I think we've talked about this before, but through Pride, we are funding Narcan to be placed in the police grid.
Awesome.
Rule what?
That is awesome.
We're, we're funding the ability to have them have the Narcan kits in the police grid.
Through Pride.
Through Pride.
That is wonderful. Anything else anybody want to ask? All right. Thirteen, public comment? Anybody have public comment?
Yes, Bob Garcia, one ten Broad Street. Every time I go up Kennedy Drive, and I look at that Cargill Falls project, I see all that equipment back there, and my first thought is, how much money's being spent? How do we know how much of the money has been spent out of the grant that they were awarded, and what was it being, what has it been spent on?
Everything is itemized by the hour, the piece of equipment, the number of containers that go off-site, hazardous materials, and it's all checked by Eagle Environmental, and that's, you can come see those numbers anytime you want.
How much did they, a grant did they give, was it half a million?
Yes, and now the additional two hundred and fifty thousand.
And now there's two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would like to stop by and see how much of that, you know how much they've spent of that five hundred thousand?
Sure, absolutely.
Actually, maybe you can include that in the report next month, does? Good idea, Scott.
Any other public comments?
I would just like to thank the Board of Selectmen, and I know there are several members of the Board of Finance for approving the first funding from lot sale to go into the Economic Development Trust Fund. I think, you know, we always have to go back to the Board of Finance, anything over five thousand dollars, but I think this, this is a, is a telling tale of, you know, of what we can do with that funding, and I think you'll see a lot of great changes with it. So I just want to thank you for your support. I know it's a tough decision the first time around, but thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, none. Entertainer motion, Twitter?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?